So it's six o'clock and that's what time we had the work sessions scheduled for. And I see that almost everyone's here. I gotta pull the microphone closer. I'm not used to the microphone anymore. And I do hear an echo. Okay. Okay. And if there's anyone who zoomed in and they can't hear us, please just send a message in chat. We'll know. We'll try to pay attention to that. Or raise your hand if you are having issues hearing us or understanding. I'm gonna go ahead and, so work sessions are super informal. We just go ahead and get the party started. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Sally be the leader of that party this evening, I think. Are you, are you prepared? Are you ready? Okay. Do you need a minute? Okay. I'll let you introduce the topic and get us going.
Okay. So the topic this evening is to provide direction to staff and, and the planning commission as to how the city council would like to proceed with review of the recreational park trailer, recreation vehicle definition, as well as recreational vehicle park and campground. So of, beginning of March, I did provide the city council and the planning commission, uh, planning commission with a background memo that provided historical documentation of the three existing campgrounds and RV parks that are in Woodland Park. And in identifying the problem, it, these definitions have always included terms such as temporary, intermittent, transient, or short-term occupancy. And in fact, today, I looked at the zoning regulations from 1977 to 95. And sure enough, recreational vehicle has the use of facilities for intermittent or short-term occupation. So when the city council charged the planning commission to look at the issue of small manufactured homes, single-family homes being built in a multifamily zone, the planning commission and the council ended up adopting ordinance number 1384, which essentially removed any single-family use in a high, high-density use. It also clarified the definitions of various types of unit classifications because the state had new definitions for recreational vehicles, park models, and park models are a type of camping RV. A HUD home, manufactured home, which is a, also known as a mobile home. And mobile homes are certified by HUD to be built to a permanent occupancy standard. And then also modular homes, whether they're commercial or residential, are built to a resident, international residential code. So ordinance 1383 included clarification of these definitions and added a limitation for RV occupancy of 180 days. And so I just want to go back a little bit to let you all know, there may be some misunderstanding about the role of staff and our responsibilities in administering the zoning regulations. So when I began as a city planner in 1999, I was reviewing all the zoning regulations and getting up to speed as to what I was going to be responsible for implementing and enforcing and administering. And I noticed at that time that the definitions for campgrounds and RVs included this language about temporary use. And I went to my boss, the planning director, and to the city manager at the time and said that we do, we have one campground in our community, the Diamond Campground, that actually operates under a temporary or transient or short-term use. But we have two other facilities, Bristlecone and the Woodland RV Park, that have more permanent use year-round, up to two or more years of people living in an recreation vehicle. And at that time, the city manager and the planning director told me, just ignore it. We're not going to do anything about this. It's existing and just stand down, Sally. So, so I did that. And then when I became the director in 2007, I had a conversation with our then-city attorney, Aaron Smith, as to this conundrum that we have as an inconsistency between what the regulations say and what is happening in the community, in these commercial properties. And Ms. Smith said that unless you have a definition that is definitive in terms of a length of period of time that defines temporary or short-term or intermittent, it is going to be very difficult to enforce. So a year ago, when we were starting to work on ordinance 18, no, 1383, we updated the code and put a definitive timeline of 180 days, which is six months, which is a season of use, and felt that now is the time to perhaps look at our campgrounds and ensure that they operate as recreational facilities and not long-term living facilities. They, when they are long-term living facilities, these campgrounds function almost like a mobile home park. And yet they do not meet mobile home park standards that protect those residents' safety. So that is staff's major concern, as well as the planning commission had similar concerns. And that was the genesis of the 180-day time limit, was to be able to effectively define and implement enforcement. And let me say that it was never the staff's intent to evict or to be heavy-handed in the approach of enforcement. And speaking with Ms. Smith, we actually talked about how to implement a program that would be very sensitive to the existing tenants and the property owners so that we would phase in a reasonable approach so that the ambiguity in the code could be removed and everyone could operate on a level playing field. Because right now, if these facilities are operating similarly to a mobile home park or a tamarack village with modular units, they would be required to purchase a city water tap for each of those units. So how is it fair that a commercial campground could operate similarly to a mobile home park and yet not meet the city's standards from a fairness and a health and safety standpoint? So what we're looking for tonight is direction from the council as, and to ask how to proceed in order to protect our citizens' health, safety, and well-being and be able to apply a set of standards that will be administered on a fair and consistent manner. That's all.
Thanks, Sally. Suzanne, I wanted to make sure that Councilmember Neil was available. Okay, I just wanted to make sure he's participating in.
Thank you much, Hillary, and I'm gonna raise my hand. Okay, so I could be rec, I know we're very informal. First of all, Sally, I want to thank you for that introduction. That is above and beyond what I was expecting and had asked you. I, I think you have taken on a lot more of the burden than I had expected, but, but thank you. And with that, what I would also like to do is give a little bit of history of how this workshop came about, if that's okay, Hillary. And it's, it's sort of to explain to my fellow council members, I did have a chance to talk with yourself separately, and I did talk to Kelly separately. I actually was able to talk to Robert today separately on how this came about. And it's a very fast-moving topic in my world because I've been doing a lot of research. But since I was the one that had asked you to be the second for making this workshop possible, I wanted to give the citizens a little bit of a history and to reassure to Jeff, Ivan, and Jan, who I have spoken at great lengths with Jeff and Ivan, and a little less time with Jan, but I still did have a very sizable conversation with them. What the history in my thinking in putting in the request for this workshop and addressing just 180 days. And it comes about from listening to the testimony that came forward in the last meeting. But why this workshop is really based on Tony Perry's request, where he expressed that there are a lot of property owners and a lot of tenants and future tenants that we may have just put their life into a tizzy. And he had asked, is there some way that we could expedite the 180-day component of the entire ordinance? So I started asking questions about, you know, what, what is the background of the 180 days? And I worked, and Sally has given it to you. There has always been this temporary notion, but I kept trying to press, why? You know, why 180 days? And I was leaning towards, there's no reason for it. And I don't want to say that that's my position right now. What happened about an hour and a half ago is I finally got a return call from the National, I can give you his actual title, if you can give me just a second, from the Senior Management of Government Affairs on Recreational Vehicle Industry Association, REVA, which is the little seal that they put on all the RVs when they come off the lot. I was expecting to hear from him that there is no 180 days because all you see is these three characterizations. Recreational, temporary, and seasonal use, when you see the definitions of RVs. However, he said that there has been a recent change and push that, per Sally's explanation, you can't enforce something that's, that's abstract, what's temporary. They have, in fact, been pushing a standard, and I just learned, it is up to 180 days. They're trying to add some clarity at the national level for all RV camps, that 180 days is the sanctioned number. And we got into a discussion about, well, why is that important? Because to me, the issue is the winter months and whether campgrounds and RVs can handle the cold weather. And that's what we should be concentrating on, is, is that aspect of it. He gave me a great tutorial about RVs. And the, the tutorial is basically the, the components in an RV are built to a different standard than the standards in a house. The HVAC, the washing machines, the refrigerator, all of the components that you see in a house are built to a different standard. They're built to a standard where they are warranted and operate on the, the fine print is, they're only designed to operate 180 days worth of use per year. After that, the warranties are invalid. So that's where the 180 days comes from. And I think that's why there was an effort by the planning commission and the city staff to get that 180 days. There is a push in all the literature to go to 180 days. So that's a little bit of the background. But then I also want to, Hillary, a step back. I know I'm talking a lot, and let me pause for a second. Does any council member have a question at this point about the little bit of history I'm giving?
I don't think so. Robert, do you?
Because if it's okay, I'll continue.
So Rusty, that's all well and good. I have to ask myself the question, who is the, who is the drive in the, in this national organization to push these standards across the country? There are people who live in RVs year-round across the country. And I'm not sure that it's the role of government to go in and insert ourselves into their choice of, style of living. I don't, I mean, that's great that there's somebody who's trying to push it, but that doesn't mean that it's right. It doesn't mean that it's the best interest for the community. There's a lot of people who push things to make them standard for everybody that aren't really good for everybody.
And, and Robert, that is a perfect statement for why I stopped in where I was. What I was trying to do is give a little bit of additional history around what Sally was talking about. Because now I want to switch and go, I asked myself, why? You know, what, why, what gives us the right as a city to state 180 days? With, I mean, yeah, I got the industry's perspective. The units are designed to only operate 180, then they start breaking down at an abnormal rate. I don't think it's the role of the government to take on the burden of telling an owner, you're foolish. It's like, if I sell somebody an RV and they want to make it into a boat, that's not what it's designed for, but if that's their choice to turn it into a boat, I don't think it's the city's, I don't think it's the government's responsibility to tell that owner, you're stupid, you're gonna lose, if it sinks, it's on you. My only concern became, are we equitably taxing the responsible element fairly so that the, the hoteling and Airbnb and mobile home park, there's a standard, whatever it is, it should be equitable? The same with the water taps, are we charging properly from a city perspective? And then from a citizen's perspective, my only concern was, are we protecting the water system in the sewer so that if a campground allows for seasonal, meaning the cold weather, where the water lines can freeze and break? And when they thaw, we could have a fairly significant loss of water, which is a rare commodity to the citizens? Or if the sewer line froze, split the line, thaws, and we got sewage spilling out on the ground? Those are the only two things I think the citizens would care about, other than the taxes and the fairness and the taps and everything, paying the same rates. If the, if the campgrounds came back and said, we will, you know, provide some sort of a a standard that if water lines, and I'm not saying this is the final thing, I'm just saying this is where my head was. If they came back and said, yes, we will make campground rules that water hoses, if attached and left open through the winter months, they must have, have the heating hose on it so they can't freeze. And same with sewer lines, there's a heat tape you put on it. I, I own two RVs, so I know all about these things. And I maybe talk about things that some of the citizens are not aware of. But there are RV standard accessories that prevent the freezing of water lines and sewer hoses. One of the campground owners came back and said, well, what if we had a different solution other than the heat tap? And I, and he laid out, what if we just require, they disconnect the water hoses when, when they're not, you know, they fill up their water tanks and then turn it off, disconnect, so that there's no possibility of the system being, the integrity of the system being lost. Same with the sewer, you dump your sewage and then you disconnect the hose so that we don't have an integrity of the system. I, and I told him, I didn't care what the solution was. I was just interested in protecting the integrity of the systems on behalf of the citizens, so we didn't lose water and we didn't have waste on the ground. So that's kind of where I had gone with my discussions with him, Robert.
Thanks, thanks. Can I call you Hillary, and this is? Okay. So I guess my first question would be for you, Sally. You talked about safety. So can you give me any data that talks about how we, at our mobile home parks, or trailer parks, I'm sorry here, RV parks, have safety issues that caused undue issues? Do we have a historical issue of this, or is this self-monitored by the, the RV parks?
So this, this is just off the top of my head. I have prepared a deep analysis of comparison between the mobile home standards, for example, and a campground standard. In fact, we have no standards for campgrounds, so, or the standards with which RVs are built. But just off the top of my head, mobile homes must be tied down and set and inspected in order that they do not get blown over. We have a requirement that houses and mobile homes must meet a 125 mile an hour wind gust. This situation with people in their RVs are under, you know, a threat should we have a major windstorm. That's one example.
But do we have a statistic of that actually occurring in your time in the planning department?
No, I, I was aware of an RV in Teller County that did get blown over.
Not in our RV parks?
Not in our RV parks, but in Teller County, they have experienced that. There are also-
If I can just kind of press you a little on that. Was that an open space? Was the RV out in the, you know, like if it's in Teller County, if it was in Divide, it's like-
Yes, it was in Victor. It was in Victor.
Oh, in Victor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have standards for snow loads at 40 pounds per square foot. And a couple of weeks ago, we had some pretty heavy snows. These units could potentially collapse as a result of heavy snow loads. There is a requirement for two egress points in a structure. Many of these only have one, so people could get trapped in the units for fire.
Do we have any, do we have any statistical incidences in Woodland Park where that has occurred?
Again, I have not done an analysis, so this is off the top of my head.
Well, it just in your memory in the, in the time that you've served as the planning director?
I'm not aware of fires in our campgrounds. But that is a true risk because typically there is a fire hydrant, you know, every 400 feet, and a looped water line and fire protection for a mobile home assembly. As long as you have more than 12 units, you must have a looped water line on a fire system that is protecting those residents. Campgrounds do not have that. So fire, wind, snow loads, egress, insulation. You'll see that RVs are all skirted so to try to protect their insulate, you know, their warmth. They don't meet the R factors that are required for mobile homes or any standard home. They run on propane typically. I did just print four pages of the RV standards. And it has warning, danger, warning, danger. So they are not, they are putting out these warnings to let people know that these are recreational facilities, not permanent housing standards. So that's just off the top of my head. And Matt McVicker is here, who is our chairman of the Board of Review, which Mac is an engineer who understands building codes and construction. And why we have those codes in place is to protect the health, safety, and well-being of our residents.
And Sally, that, that triggers my, a point I wanted to insert in here. In, in speaking with the National Representative, his first name's Nick, he did go through that. He talked about the insulation is a very vastly different between the difference, the systems are not designed, yada, 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 and that's what you have, the National Fire Protection Agency- yada, yada, yada. And that's what you have, the National Fire Protection Agency's 1192, which governs the vehicles themselves. I think it's a given that they aren't, I mean, they are designed not for full-time use. They are in fact designed for a temporary seasonal recreational use. But, but what you did, started talking about is the campground. And, and I learned today that there's a National Fire Protection Agency 1194, which is the standard for RV campgrounds. Now, have, has anyone on the planning commission or the planning department looked at, along with our RV park owners, to see if the RV parks comply with the national standards for a campground? An RV campground?
We have not looked at that.
Were, were we aware that there is an actual standard for RV campgrounds different from the RV vehicles themselves?
We would certainly explore all of that. And in fact, because our zoning regulations do not include standards for campgrounds, and this issue has risen to the level that it, that it has, we would certainly look at all those resources.
Well, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be more a function of the fire chief in his department or a fire marshal to evaluate that and make that determination rather than our planners? Wouldn't they be involved with that?
We would reach out to all the experts in the field.
Thanks.
And, and I think that was Kelly speaking?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Kelly, I think that's a valid point, because another thing that I learned in my telephone call today, the RV industry actually had a meeting of the minds when they were talking about standards for RVs and their designs versus the campgrounds. They made a unilateral, they all agreed to turn this over to the National Fire Protection Agency to be the governing body for campgrounds and RVs. So I think by, by you saying we should have the fire department, it is a national fire department standard. We would want them heavily involved in just working and assessing where our campgrounds are compared to the standards and bring the results back to the planning commission and the council to consider. I don't want to impose-
You know, I think, I think that's more in their, in their court and not necessarily ours.
Yeah.
I, I think that that's outside of our authority and, and I, you know, I, I would leave that to them.
Yeah, and to me, it begs the question, once again, about statistics. So, okay, somebody is now trying to regulate everybody. But there has to be some statistical data that says that this is a genuine concern, that there are just as many lives being lost to RV hazards as there are being lost to COVID. Then it's something we should act on. But I, I'm not so convinced that yet, and I'm not saying there isn't, and this is really kind of an informal setting to be inquiring about this, but, but really, we'd want to be answering some of those questions. So to that point, Kip, if I could put you on the spot. Can you talk a bit about what's the water tap issue? What's the sewer, sewage issue at the commercial RV parks? And, well, are there issues, concerns? Are there areas where you've found that we are overburdening the, the infrastructure?
I'd like to apologize to Rusty for interrupting, I'm sorry.
Oh, are you good, Rusty?
This is a work session, we're allowed to just cut.
Oh, great. Okay, good.
Um, can everybody hear me?
I can, but I'm close.
Not really issues, just things to point out to your attention. So if an RV park campground is occupied full-time, like a single-family home, then I need to plan for water planning accordingly. Also with billing comes up. So, for example, if a RV space is occupied, I don't know, anything above 95% of the year, or you just call it 100% for easy math, that I would treat it like a residential home. That same residential home buys a water tap, that same residential home has a residential billing rate. However, in RV parks and campgrounds, they have a commercial tap to where they're billed commercially. And part of your water and sewer bill, you are charged for a capital fee and O and M, if you will. So in RV parks and campgrounds, they get a significant discount being if, just assume an RV park is occupied 100% of the time. For every 12 spaces, they're charged one capital fee. Okay, and also that's at a commercial rate, so they have bigger blocks. So water usage is zero to 12,000 gallons for a certain price, where a residential home is zero to 4,000 gallons for a, a specific price. So just comparing, trying to compare apples to apples as far as water planning. I would plan an RV park if it's occupied 100% of the time, just like I would a subdivision, a residential or a single-family home subdivision. That one unit is the same as one single-family home, and I need to account for that in available water. Now, there is, there is the argument on the opposite side, I'm always a devil's advocate. Well, they've been operating this way for years, you're still planning accordingly, everything works. But if we try to be fair and across the board, that's just one thing you need to consider.
On a single-family tap, you have a yard, you have a lot of other use than you do in somebody who's in a, in a RV, who doesn't have plants, doesn't have other things. So are, do you, when you analyze the water usage, is your water usage from the commercial RV park, is it on par with 12 residence, single-family residents? Or is it, you know, those gallons used, are they, are they on a par or are they less?
Well, I've never done the analysis, just off the top of my head. I would say usually when you're in an RV and you're hooked up to city water, you allow your water to run like a mobile home does, so your pipes don't freeze. Those similar things can happen and cannot. You know, for example, if you disconnect and fill up with water and go back to your site and then store that same water and dispose of it, there's also a wastewater impact when you have a large tank of sewage that gets in, that goes into an anaerobic process where our wastewater plant is an aerobic process. So two different things going on there. So the strength of the wastewater could be more than a single-family home. There's lots of variables. I mean, I would hate just to, and I don't know the, the, the capacity of the RV parks, I don't know if they're full all the time. So if I just took an RV park and said, if it's full 100% of the time and there's 60 units in there, what's their water usage? What does that look like compared to 60 single-family homes? And it varies, I mean, people's water actually used to vary is pretty good too. So, I mean, it'd be a good comparison to do, for sure.
And then how about wastewater? Talk, um, talk about the capacity that a RV park has for wastewater versus a single-family residence. Is there, is there, don't you, they normally have a dump at a, at a RV park?
Yeah, they do. And I'm sure there's, there's stub outs to each site at a lot of these. I don't know the inner infrastructure of the parks. There's also, there's also a cab, I want to throw another piece of information in is like a hotel, for example. They're a commercial user as well. They're charged one for, one billable user or one unit, if you will, for every four rooms. So for example, if the RV parks have a permanent, well, temporary, permanent structure, if you will, that's there and people rent it on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. You know, there's different scenarios that could happen with that. So I think the utility code was set up to take into account how much they're occupied. So that's why campground would get a billable user for one every 12 spots, because they don't use the water that normal compared to a single-family equipment. Same thing with the hotel. If you, if you look at the hotel, one of every four rooms instead of one of every 12 campsites is a billable equivalent user, if you will. So it's, it's really hard. I mean, we have, we have three different situations here in town, and they're all different. And they've been different as long as I've been here, so.
Well, and what we're, we're talking about is a difference of, I mean, we're already accounting for 180 days, right? So for Diamond Campground, I mean, what we're talking about is the difference of six months versus 12 months occupation of the RV parks. Because right now, if, if it's only 180 days, they're going to be that, there that long anyway. So the difference was really only six months of the year. So the impact would be twice, not once. I mean, am I making myself clear? Because right now, we're, even if we do allow this change and we enforce the 180 days, we're still going to have 180 days of those circumstances happening, right? So the only difference that we're talking about really is an additional 180, 80 days a year.
Oh, no, I see what you're saying.
Because we're already allowing either way, 180 days. So the, the delta or the difference is another 180 days a year. We only have to put, we put one part of it away, because we're already experiencing it. And either way we go, we're going to allow it. Because it's a campground and we have them. And we've had them since 1976 or before.
Kelly, I'm not with you on, on, on that. I don't think there's going to be even 180 days, because right now, whether it's the same person staying 180 and then another person comes in for 180, or one person stays 365, or 180 people, you know, stay two nights each. I think right now, the campgrounds basically are operating at capacity. And, and the factor is already worked in, I'm not sure it would automatically be 180-day difference.
Right, if we just held it static, right?
Yeah, do the analysis based on it's being-
One person.
Yeah, 365 days a year. Assume it, the space is occupied. I don't care whether it's the same person, like I said, two people, 180 people, one. Occupied 365 days, because what we're talking about is removing that cap and allowing permanent use. I would like, like Robert's asking, what is, and what Kip is pointing out, is there a difference in utilization really, historically? And what is the financial differences from an equitability perspective? You know, single versus multi-tap rates? What is that for? There's another issue that I do want to bring up, once we finish all the water and sewer, and it has to do with liability, though. So I'll move on.
Right, I'm just going to chime in real quick about the water issue, though. I mean, apartment complexes pay for a commercial tap, they don't have individual tap fees for each unit, right?
So this is where our tap gets real confusing. So they pay for multifamily commercial tap fee-
Right.
-for an apartment. However, each unit, one tap comes out of our allotment of our bank.
Right, right.
One allotment comes out of one?
So we have a total number of, we have a total number of water that we have that's available. We convert that same number of water into taps available. And that goes into our tap bank and how much, how many taps we can sell. So we don't develop our community, so we don't have enough water for it. And then, so when, when an apartment complex comes in, let's say it's 24 units, there's 24 taps that come out of that bank. And then that's why I, I went to explaining a little bit to, in our, in the reconciliation is because it's a commercial tap fee, if you will, those years are, are tap fee sales and average tap fee is a lot less, because it's a lot cheaper to buy taps that way. But the water, from a water planning standpoint, that's what I need to be prepared for in the future is if, if, if a unit is a unit and every unit that I planned for, based on the last census, was 2.47 people per unit, from a water planning standpoint, I need to have enough water to serve the rest of our vacant lots. That's, that's the goal unless council chooses to direct otherwise.
Right.
Kip, so that 24, uh, let's just take that apartment complex with 24 units. Are they getting a commercial tap that you then allocate 24? How is that, I mean, like you said, in a RV park, it's one in 12. So is it, so what's, what's the apartment complex ratio?
A complex, 24 units, they have 24 billable users at a rate, at a residential rate, even though it's a commercial tap.
It's one, it's one physical, like-
Oh, it's one tap, it's not 24 taps, but they get charged at an individual rate of 24 single-family residents?
So-
Is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it depends on how the HOA is structured.
So what we do, I'll just use Trail Ridge for an example.
Okay.
Okay. So Trail Ridge has seven buildings, they have seven commercial taps.
Okay.
Okay. Each building has 24 units in it.
Okay.
So that was 24 times seven taps that came out of the bank from our tap bank.
Okay.
When we send them a bill, there's the, the capital fee and the O and M fee on your, on your bill. Both of them are based off how many units. So there's 24 capital fees. And then the water for that is broken down into, you just divide total number of, the total number of gallons used divided by 24. So you get the average number of gallons used per unit, and that's how they're built.
And, and we don't yet have a statistic that tells us how that squares with 12 trailers or RVs?
I mean, I could, I could look at their water bills, if I knew what their occupancy was, I could take that number and figure it out, assuming we're comparing apples to apples.
I think, I think the water tap thing is a little bit of a rabbit hole, though.
Is it?
Yeah. Because, I mean, you can have, there's, isn't there a story of it, at least at a mobile home park, where one mobile home unit was letting water run just so the cat could-
Yes.
-water out of the tap? So, you know, everybody uses their water in extraordinarily different ways. And so it's kind of difficult, I mean, you could do a general sum. But also, I think the, I'm not sure where the important factor is in that, in the sense of our citizens are not going to run out of water, because the mobile home parks have full-time resident, or the, I'm sorry, the RV parks have people staying in their RVs longer than 180 days. If, if that were an issue, we wouldn't have had campgrounds in the first place, or something like that would have been a red flag a long time ago.
Right.
No. So I just want to be, I just want to warn everyone, I think that that's a little bit of a, a rabbit hole to go down with water. And I do want, I see that we do have some RV park owners here, and I would like to allow them to be able to have a moment to speak if they wanted to. I know that Mac is here, and I don't know if Sally had anticipated wanting Mac to say a few words. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to let Mac go first, and then I'm going to go ahead and let the public have their turn, if they would like to get up and speak as well, as long as, Rusty, are you all right right now? Or did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I want to hear the public, I want to hear from the RV park owners. But then I'd like to kind of ask for a, an action at the end of all of the discussion of the council members.
Sure, and we'll be mindful that we've got just about 15 minutes left. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Alfieri, did you have anything you wanted to add since you, you've arrived?
I have nothing at this point, but agree with Councilmember Neil, I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
Great, okay. So yes, go ahead, I'll let you come up.
Good evening, I'm Mac McVicker. I'm chairman of the Board of Review, which is part of the building department here. I'm going to start by relaying an incident that happened about seven or eight years ago in one of these mobile, one of these RV parks. I was visiting a couple there who were summer visitors here for decades, Jim and Rose Thurman, not Thurman, Turman. I knocked on the door of their RV and I got a slight shock. Thought it might have been static electricity. So then I did it in a safe manner with the back of my hand, so if I did get shocked, it would convulse this way and I wouldn't be grabbing onto the doorknob. And another shock. So I, I tapped on it until they opened the door. And they were actually aware of the shock, but never killed anybody, never knocked anybody unconscious. Being an electrical engineer, I said, okay, after I conducted the business, I'll come back over here with my instruments and we'll figure out what the problem is. When I see the age of these mobile home parks, and they've mainly been-
Mobile home parks or RV parks? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
And they're mainly immune to any building code or, until recent- And they're mainly immune to any building code or, until recently, NFPA oversight. I can just about guarantee you, the electrical infrastructure in there is not even close to today's code. And I don't know if this is the right forum to address this or not. I really don't have a dog in this fight of 10 days, 90 days, 180 days, 360 days. But thanks to Councilman Neil's education of NFPA 1194. Rusty, is it 1194 or 1154?
1194. It's a sister component to 1192.
I think as part of your work here, you should look at requiring any RV park in the city limits to be brought up to electrical code before somebody does have a life-threatening shock. And that's immaterial whether somebody lives in, like I said, for a shorter or longer period of time. But then you could extend this to gas hookups. I believe some of these are propane. I don't know if they're all propane. Does anybody know? We have RV parks?
Ours are propane.
All of yours are propane? Now, if you hook up propane to a home in Woodland Park, it has to undergo an inspection. Do you call inspectors?
Camaro, yes.
Okay, so the propane company does that for you for each RV when they get hooked up? Okay, very good. Pressure's right, no leak? Okay. But when they plug their TT 30, their travel trailer 30 amp plug into that connector, there's no electrical inspection, is there? No. So I think you have some other things to consider and look at to bring some assurance, some safety to people that live in these places that may not even be aware of the risk. And that's, that's part of the duty of, of your job is to make this a safe community to live in, whether it be a single-family, multifamily, or an RV. I ask that you take that into consideration. Thank you.
So I'm just going to comment real quick on that about, I'm pretty sure the parks probably pay attention to that because they don't want anyone's homes burning or having electrical issues either. I'm sure that the parks would be capable of regulating those types of issues probably better than us, because a lot of the RVs that are coming and going are coming and going from different states as well. And so it's a, it's a unique situation to want to get the council, the government involved in saying, we have to inspect every RV that's come from everywhere because other states may have different standards as well. So it's a, it's a unique situation that way.
Yeah.
Hillary did come. Making the point that the RV needs to be inspected for this, but the electrical connection.
The connection at the park.
Where they plug their cord into.
Okay.
Have changed immensely since the 70s when these parks were put in. These RV parks were put in.
Okay. Right.
Is that Stephanie?
One second, Rusty, I'll clarify.
Right, that they plug into.
Can we hear someone?
So just. Rusty, there was just an audience member participating, mentioning that the electric companies place the electric wiring hookups in the parks. So to get all of it clarified, I'm going to ask if the Baldwins would like to speak about these issues. We only have a short amount of time left. I don't know if there's any other public that wish to participate. Do you see anyone, Suzanne?
There's none on Zoom.
Okay, all right, good.
Well, while Jeff is coming up there, I would just ask Mac to consider, the issue is 180 days, and I don't think that plug issue, which, you know, we need to talk about, it makes a difference whether it's 10 days, 180 days, or 365 days.
All our electrical boxes are up to date, okay? And the water usage, Kip, averages about $450 a month, and that's 46 units. Forty RVs and six cabins and apartments. So I don't think we're using a lot of water. This 40-pound test, that's ridiculous. Most of the houses down here are only 30. And all, you know, we have never had an incident since we've had the park. We just had 27 inches on top of these units. How many collapsed? Thank you. So, you know, you're going to just pick us apart. I can see this right now. So, you know, this is very disappointing. But we did, we've done a study on long-term stays of 180 days. Long-term stays in campgrounds, there's a website you can go to where states allow 180 days or longer. But that's not the state, it's really the municipalities within the states. But I'll give you a list of the states that allow 180 days. Oklahoma, Kansas, South Dakota, Montana, Idaho, Washington State, Oregon, California, Nevada, Utah, Wyoming, Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, Florida. And that's where I stopped, okay? And then in Colorado, Colorado Springs, Denver, Pueblo, Canyon City, Montrose, Lamar, Fort Collins, Durango, and others. Okay.
Mr. Baldwin, can I just clarify? You said 180 days, is that 180 days or more, or is it limited? Oh, it's more than 100?
Yeah.
That, that list is all over 180 days?
Long-term stays of 180 days or longer, okay? So then we get to the nearby campgrounds. These are our competition, basically. Let's see. Where there's no restriction on length of stay. So if we start at our RV park and we go down to 8th Street, there's Peak View next door, Big Pines, Rocky Top, Pike's Peak RV and campground in Manitou, Garden of the Gods, campground, Goldfield, Fountain Creek, and Foot of the Rockies at 8th Street. These are all our competition. So, and then we get back to mobile home parks and taps and so forth. We are not a mobile home park. Mobile homes are not mobile. Once they are placed in a park, they stay. An RV is mobile. The customers that stay at our RV park can stay one night, one week, one month, or as long as they want. So, yeah, we're not a mobile home park. In no way are we a mobile home park. So I have a lot more, and I'm not going to go through it tonight.
Well, that's.
Can Jim talk? He lives in our RV park.
Well, actually, since we only have one minute left, I would like to ask if council would be comfortable, I hate to do this to everyone, but if we would extend or if we could carry this workshop over to one more so that you have adequate time to present and that Jim would have adequate time to speak? Because we have two minutes before council actually starts. So I, I don't mean to cut people's time short, but we are on that time limit. And if council would either agree to that or if there's an action now that council knows that they would like to direct to staff, I would appreciate to hear that.
Well, this is a work session, so I don't know that we can make anything.
We can make a consensus to give staff direction.
Rusty, or I'm sorry, go ahead. Stephanie, was that you?
Sorry. I do feel this is an important issue that shouldn't be put off for too long. So if we could manage to schedule some sort of additional work session before the next council meeting, I would be open to that.
Okay, if we could possibly schedule it for next week, if we could do a.
The sooner the better, I would suggest.
Do a doodle poll and get it in next week so that we can get this wrapped up. It is an important topic. I know they have, I know, I know residents are waiting to understand what the rule is going to be. I know Sally is anticipating what she needs to be doing. So it isn't something that we should push any further. But because of our time limit now, we have to wrap it up. And I, I think it would be best that we move it to next week with a doodle poll.
I will do that.
Okay, and I apologize for cutting anyone short today.
Thank you, Hillary.
I would just ask the council to do their best to accommodate a time as soon as possible, to be respectful.
Sure.
Agreed. I think if we can manage to accommodate something like an hour, hour and a half for the next work session, definitely more than just the hour that was allowed tonight.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, well, thanks for attending, everyone. And if you, we'll keep you informed of when we schedule the next workshop. And if you don't hear from us and you're curious, please contact Suzanne at the city office, and she will let you know when it's scheduled.
Quick question, Suzanne. Would anyone that's here tonight be able to address us during items not on the agenda during the council meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion to those that are here. If you'd like to address the council on this issue and you're already here, there's a portion in the agenda early on for comments for items not on the agenda.
Yeah, and it'll happen quickly. Well, I just, I mean, it just cursed us.
Right.
Can I take a pee break?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're going to just take a five-minute break before council starts.